It seems to me that there is additional need for experts and investigators. It historically has been in the judiciary's budget, and we make application to the judiciary for those funds. They've put a kibosh on that. They don't want the judiciary having control over the investigators and the experts of the public defender. So I'm asking for an increase. I think it might be $50,000.
Thirty-nine-seven fifty.
Is that what it is? Okay. And anyway, a lot of this is not even discretionary. When the state hires toxicologists or pathologists, it's pretty much deemed a breach of our obligation if we're not getting our own experts and reviewing their material. This money doesn't have to be spent. I think to get credit with DIDs, we need to show that we have enlarged our budget, that the public defender has control over investigator and expert fees. And it all depends on who and what the district attorney charges. They charge people with category A felonies, then they've got experts. They've got toxicologists, they've got geneticists. A big thing now is the, they can't seem, sheriff can't seem to make an arrest anymore without seizing electronic devices. And so now a new area of expertise are these people who will go in and get downloads of people's electronic devices so they can look at the Facebook, social media, Google searches, which can be very beneficial to the state if somebody is Googling, you know, how to bury my grandmother, and that comes up. But in the meantime, which they all do, or pictures of themselves using narcotics or boasting about something that they stole. So anyway, we have to hire our own experts. And imagine the amount of material that is downloaded. In fact, I have to turn a hard drive into the sheriff's department to get a copy of it. And it's real expert, it takes an expert to look through that data and respond. So in any event, there is an increase. The good news is by increasing it, we're going to maintain, hopefully, our independence, and we're going to get the state to pay for it.
So you're anticipating then, Matt, that the 11.77% increase is something billable from the county back to the state?
Yes, it's my understanding that any expenses we have to meet those standards, they will reimburse us. We lock into our 2018 budget, plus or minus, I think, cost of living or inflation, and everything else they're going to pick up. So I'm not asking for a snowcat because I don't think DIDs would say that was necessary to meet our performance standards. But when it comes to experts, it could, depending on where the crime occurred.
Grandma might be buried somewhere under that snowcat.
Could be buried there. So anyway, that's what we're doing. And I think, I think, did we not get our, I saw something come across where DIDs was going to pay, allocated what they were going to pay this last year for us?
Yeah, well, there was one bill that came through, like six thousand or seven thousand, I think, that they did get approved to reimburse us for.
Which made me think that apparently, you know, I was skeptical, right? Where is the state really going to step up and do this? But apparently, that's an indication that they are.
Yeah, the big problem at the time was the governor rejected their budget. And so kind of like they did a number of things during the COVID thing, but they went back to the legislature, got the budget approved. So that's why they can do that. So it looks like the money's locked in right now until the next session.
So basically then, of the 11.77%, there's a subtraction for the normal COLA merit for his staff and for Matt, and then everything else would be reimbursable.
The increase, as I understand it, yep.
Yep, okay.
For now.
And if they don't, you know, we do something different next year, I guess.
Says here anyhow. Okay. Any commissioners have any questions, comments, motions?
Make a motion to tentatively approve public defender's budget as presented.
Motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. So, thanks, Matt.
And don't do Google searches if you're going to commit crimes.
Yeah, I just looked at snowcats. I don't know.
Yeah, I know.
How to bury a snowcat.
All right. Thank you, Matt.
How to bury a snowcat.
Okay, alternative public defender, oh four nine.
Let's see if there are a ton here. Here, is that some sickness in the family? I don't see him. So I can handle this. It's almost identical to what you just heard. The only difference is, is on service and supplies. He did go up about $9,000 on that. It was a thousand dollars. As you can see, his actual expenditures, and that was mainly because we got him a new office and some new equipment and things like that, went up. It was about $6,000. So we're just going to increase that to 10,000. The rest of it, it's up for the same reason, wages and salaries. And that differential, we put some additional monies aside for, you know, witnesses and investigatory type things.
If I may, the other big change to this office was the addition of staff, support staff, last year. And so that when you look back at, say, three years ago, that's the big jump in the budget is because of the addition of support staff.
Okay, all right.
Almost, I keep thinking she's been here for a couple of years, but that was just this last year.
Yeah.
That's true. That's true.
Any, any questions?
The one thing I did notice on here was that they were going to purchase a printer and a Xerox machine. Is that going to be done through that program that we approved, or is this one of them offshoot deals?
No, it'll be definitely through the program.
Okay.
It works directly for me.
Good catch.
All right. I just want to make sure we're sticking with the program.
Okay. All right. Any additional questions, comments, motions?
I'll make a motion to approve the alternate, alternate public defenders tentatively. Approve it.
Okay.
Alternate public defenders budget.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion, any nays? Nope. Not seeing any. Motion carries unanimous. Okay, Public Works Department, two oh two. And that is in your wheelhouse.
What?
I heard that.
Don Kelkoski, Home County Public Works. So aside from the raises, the increase in salaries due to the COLA and STEPS, a couple of the other things that we have increased is vehicle fuel and maintenance. I've added, took a shot in the dark and added another $70,000 to that. It's a, it's typically a $530,000 item. I added another 70 to that. I don't know if that's going to be enough or not. That's, I just don't know with that item. So I wanted a little bit of buffer in there. So it seemed, we got fuel last week, and it was more than double what we paid in January. So insurance is up a little bit, and that's the increase there is just to cover those costs for that. Travel and training, I increased substantially. There's a new, there's a new mandate for CDL licenses that we can no longer train our own CDL people. They have to go to a course. It's four weeks. It's Carson or Elko or Vegas. So this should cut, I mean, I don't know exactly what the costs are because this just came about in February. February 7th is when this started. But we're going to have to pay for the course, and we're going to have to pay for the perdiem of those individuals that are going over there. So that, that's kind of a big hit, but that's, that's one of the big deals there. So everything else is pretty much flat. The other big, excluding machinery. So that, I've got a motor grader on there. Again, I've got a truck tractor. We're having some issues with some of our older trucks and tractors that, just trying to keep them together and running. I've got $75,000 on there. That should cover us for a used one, and it just gives us a little bit of latitude to play there. Next item on the list is fencing for the Golconda yard. There's been a lot of thefts around the area lately. It's the Golconda and the Winamucca yard. So I threw $100,000 in there. That's not enough to do both yards completely. It gets us going so we can get at least some fencing done. On the Winamucca yard, I'd like to fence that back piece along the BLM. There's a little two-track access road. We've found some fuel cans where somebody had been siphoning some gas, and they just came through the barbed wire fence right there. Luckily, they took it out of a generator that we were auctioning off, so that fuel was like seven, eight years old. So I was happy about that.
Feel the taste of it.
Right. So it's just, it's one of those things to keep our stuff ours for now. So the other thing, next on the list is a water pump. Looking at a used one there. They have been ranging right around 15 to 20, so I just went with the higher end just to cover us.
Have you bought a few of those already?
We have.
You don't need more?
We've bought, so since I've been here, we've bought three. We lost one. It was stolen.
Oh.
Yeah. So I think I told you guys about that. So yeah, it got stolen. We've got, we got the insurance check for that. I was going to purchase another one. However, the lead time on them is crazy. So we're talking August before we get it. So that's one thing I need to talk to Gina and see if that money's still going to be there. It's just, I just haven't had the chance, just because that was kind of a separate little deal.
So is the insurance money going to cover pretty much the cost of the replacement?
Close, close. Obviously, everything's gone up in price anymore. I think we paid like $36,000 for that thing when it was new. Right now, they're sitting around 40 to 45,000 for virtually the same unit. One thing we're looking at differently to make it not so easily removed from our possession is skid mounted, which puts a little strain on our guys because then we have to have a crane truck out there to load it if we want to move it. But there's a few locations in the county where we leave these things sit for many months at a time. And not all of them are going to be skid mount, but we'll, we'll order a few skid mount. And the guys know if they're wheel mounted and bring them home on the weekends, so they're not sitting out there for days on end. So that's what that, I got two items on here, and it's kind of just to bring your attention and kind of get your opinion on where we want to go with this. I've got the road materials storage, or road, road equipment material storage building for the Golconda property, and I've also got a newer house for the Denial property. The Golconda property, we have a five-acre lot there that I want to fence off. We've already started developing it where we can store our equipment and everything. Communications needs a place where they can locate some of their equipment. Right now, it's in the firehouse. We want to kind of keep it in-house with our stuff. So that would be another benefit of having that. And then we can keep our stuff secure. It'd be, some of the, like DEF, some of that stuff can't freeze, so they always have to come up to the shop, get DEF to take it out there. And it can be a pain just trying to keep track of what you have on hand at all times. If we had a, if we had a climate-controlled shop, they can at least have some on hand at all times. The house on the Denial property was put there in 1979. It's in pretty bad shape right now. I'd like to at least bring your attention to it, that that's something that maybe we need to look at putting on the capital projects, and maybe both of these putting on capital projects just for a placeholder, that this is something we need to look at in the future for addressing. So.
When did we buy that? Were you on the board then? What didn't seem like was that long ago to me. Six years ago, five years ago?
Yeah, that was about five or so. And it was never in good shape. We were buying it for the property. It really wasn't for that.
Right.
It was in pretty rough shape at the time. I've had a couple of, don't ever just, can't be in that house, and it was never in great shape.
And it's not on a foundation, it's just on sticks or jacks. But were you, you know, one of our operator lives, operators lives out there. He does pay rent. But it's, it's nice having somebody out there because they're immediately responsive during snow, snow events or emergencies or something like, anything like that. So it's nice having somebody out there.
So is he still, so we're proposing that he possibly utilize that residence down the road, or?
He's using, he's utilizing this residence right now.
Oh, he is?
Yes. I would just like to give him something a little nicer that's not as rundown and falling apart as this one. So. So that's the thoughts on those two. I've got a dozer on here. The one that we utilize right now is a 1981. That's kind of a wish list. We don't use it all that often, but when we do need it, we need it. I'm also, I've got $100,000 on there. I've, I've been talking with NDOT. They have two dozers that they're possibly going to get rid of at least one of them. So they know that I'm interested, and their stuff, they don't use it very often either. Shouldn't have, they don't have a lot of hours on them. So that, that's something that, if we do get approved for that, it's something, obviously, I'm going to hit NDOT up and have them pursue that a little bit harder because I'm sure we can pick that up a lot cheaper than the $100,000 that I've got on there. I've got a mini compact excavator on there. I've had that on there for two years. That's something, it was kind of a placeholder. Cashman's been pretty good lately with us being able to rent this equipment, and I do have a line item for rental. So that's something that we could absolutely pull off of there. 2,000 gallon water truck would be ideal in certain situations, not something that we're going to use every day, kind of like a snowcat. But it would be ideal when we need it. So that's, that's kind of on the wish list.
Sheriff, if I could. It has here for cleaning cattle guards. I remember when Ben asked us to purchase that, I guess you call it a vacuum truck?
Yep.
I mean, that was before we really had the sewers, and we bought that truck for that purpose. Do you ever use it?
And we do, yes, absolutely. There, there's some locations where we can use the vac truck. If it's, if there's any mag chlorides near or in that cattle guard, we can't use the vac truck because it just, it, it basically plugs off the lines as you, as you're sucking. So it just sticks to it horribly bad. We tried it once, and we found that out the hard way.
Yeah, like your truck. Kind of like your pickup.
Exactly. So, and we, we have enough locations where, you know, remote locations, the, the vacuum truck is like 50 miles an hour. So if there's locations way out, a little water truck would get there a lot quicker. Time savings and cost savings having that little unit. I've got a 10-yard truck and plow sander. Some of our plow trucks are 80s to 90s. Most of them are 80s to 90s vintage. Having troubles finding parts for them. At one time, we had two of our six broken down last winter, and that made it a little hard to stay on top of removing snow. I've got 150,000 in there. I've got equipment brokers looking for stuff that's coming out of California or whatnot because it doesn't meet the new requirements in California. However, everything they're giving me so far is older than what we have, and I don't want to deal with that. So I'm, I'm looking, but on the flip side of that, new, and the last one that NDOT bought was in excess of $250,000. So I don't want to go that route. We don't, we don't use them the way NDOT does, and I just, I have a hard time justifying that much for our 100 miles of paved road that we have. So I've got belly dumping trailer on here. I've got 110,000 total for that. Two years ago, we spent $75,000. That gives me a little bit of heartburn, just that cost increase in two years. And that's not to say that that's going to be, even be accurate anymore. So that's, I just got to see what your guys' appetite is.
Do you?
Yeah, yeah. We've been, we've looked at some used stuff, and I've had Darren pull some stuff up on the used, and it's out there, but it's not in much better shape than what we have right now. So we may be able to find used, and always on something like this, I'm going to, if we can find it used for a better price, and we're going to get some good usage out of it, obviously, I'll, I'll go that route. Frack tanks, I've got two of them on there. Those are for our water sources. We really need two more to get all of our water sources up and have frack tanks for, for water storage and filling. It helps for the, cuts down on the fill time when we're, when we're grading out there, but also it's a little, it's, it's a good storage for if there's wildfires in the area. So that's what that is. And then the pavement pad for the shop up there, we just, we ran into a lot of issues picking up sand for the Sanders this year, not having pavement down to where we could scoop it up without getting any big boulders. And I understand. So it's just, it's one of those things I would love to have, and that's, that's maybe something I could maybe pull out of special projects in the main budget. So the last couple of things I have are the existing leases that we have. Those expire in October, and that's essentially why I have two, I have two leases. Those are up in October. And then I've got two heavy-duty pickups, and you guys know the story behind that, whether we can even get them or not. So we'll see.
Are they 95,000 apiece, or?
No, they're like 40, last time I bought them, it was 42. I add a little bit.
Okay. Are you going, planning on buying the leased ones out?
I don't want to, but it may come down to doing that. And if so, that 95,000 is going to be a lot less. Because I think right now, the last I hit them up, I think it was going to cost us right around between 12 and $15,000 to buy out those leases.
Why you, why don't you want to?
Um, they're 100,000 miles already on them, and I just have heartburn since we've already spent so much money on those things already. But I understand. If I can't get a truck, obviously, that's, that's a route that we're going to go. Comments? Gina's got her pencil sharp.
Using the red pen.
I got to grab a pen.
Here's a red one.
Get your red one out. Yeah, get your red one. Get your red one ready, Don.
Okay. We got the red pens out, so where are we going?
Commissioners, just for your information, if you were to approve all of these, this would require 1.2 million dollars to be transferred from PILT.
From what?
From PILT, 1.2, if all of these are approved, just so you kind of have a, a bar, since we do have to go back to the PILT fund.
You're welcome, Kelkoski.
So on the.
It's not that funny.
So on the, on the motor grader, right at the top. The, what are we replacing there again? Is it?
So we've got a 1996 unit in our fleet. We've got two 1998s, the, and then we've also got one 2017 that we've just recently had coolant in the oil for two months in a row. So we're working on getting that resolved. Hopefully, that's a simple resolution, such as a water pump, something like that. But if not, that could be a catastrophic issue with that one. The two 1998s are worn out. The guys, when they're running them, there's just, they're down on power, they're, they're tough to do anything with.
Okay, so they're 350,000 apiece?
Correct. So that is, so with, that's our initial expenditure. I put these out on a five-year buyback. So I'm trying to think. So the last one we bought, so if we bought it for, I think the last one we bought was like $320,000. If we turned it in in five years, they would, it would end up costing us right around $70,000 for the five years. Because they would give us that money, that 200 and something thousand dollars back. But we can also use that 200 and something thousand towards the purchase of a new one in five years, and that will cut our costs down. So I've been working towards this five-year buyback since I've been here, and we've been doing really good with it every year. And I think we'll see this in a couple of years when this come, after we've been doing this for five years, how the benefits. I mean, right now, even the benefits, if we turn it in and we don't do anything, and we don't buy another motor grader, it's costing us right around $1,000 a month to own those things. So.
So I'm assuming they're essential, though, with the work program?
They are. That is, so the motor grader, the trucks and, and the truck and tractor, those are things that we utilize on a daily basis.
And if you, if you, the $100,000 for the fencing, if, if you put the $100,000 into, let's say, Winamucca, would that achieve the, trying to accomplish to finish that project?
No.
You mentioned that there was.
I, I don't believe so, just from, we just got a really quick quote from Artistic on a six-foot chain link with, I don't, I don't think we put razor wire at the top, although I probably wouldn't mind having razor wire at the top, or at least barbed wire at the top, how it's angled. And I, and I think it was right around 180 to almost 200,000. Got to remember, our shop. Got to remember our shop is, the way everything's configured up there, we're gonna have to have numerous gates to get to our salt sand, to get into the complex. We've got, you know, it's got to be up above the fuel tank so everybody can get in there and get fuel after hours. So it just the way the configuration of, is of that property, it's
Got it.
It's gonna be a headache just designing the whole thing. So we've got access.
What you're trying to do then is just, you, you had both of them in there. So you're talking about picking off the, the back perimeter to where the access points to the.
Right now, I, right now, I'd just like to do that back perimeter and you know, if it takes us three to five years to do the whole thing, so be it. But it's something that I think we should work towards. Just to keep our stuff ours.
Okay, anybody answered my question? Is anybody else have any?
Um, the, so the truck and tractor, you're gonna replace something with that?
Yes, yeah.
Belly dump, same thing you're gonna, you're just a
Correct.
Replacing old stuff.
Correct.
Yeah, sorry.
The um, storage building at the Golconda property. Have you thought about, I know you want to keep it heated and there should be a way, like a Conex?
So we have a Conex out there right now. Actually, it's still, I, I don't know if the guys moved it to the yard or not. It was at the firehouse. So last budget cycle, we got approved for uh running power to the yard. And it's taken me this long and I finally have approval from NV Energy to, to do that. So we're, we're working towards getting the power to the yard, taking baby steps, kind of like with the fencing. Let's get the power there and let's figure out what we're gonna do from, from this point. You know, if we can get the power there, then yes, we can possibly retrofit a Conex and put some heat in there, which would cost considerably less. Um, put some, put some stands so we can plug our vehicles in, the snowplow, the motor grater and whatnot in the winter. So they're, you know, protected. Um, so yes, we have thought of that.
That would be considerably less than a hundred and ten, I would think.
I would hope so. Maybe.
I don't know.
I don't know. I wouldn't be surprised.
To retrofit and heated Conex?
Just thinking if you had.
Oh, oh, for the, I was thinking about, yeah, yeah, for sure.
I was thinking like two Conexes with a pole barn over the top, drive through the center.
I, I've thought about that on the farm because we have Conexes and we have the trusses to do that, but I've never thought about it for us because I, I don't know who would do that.
Or how would you get it permitted?
Yeah, the engineering involved with something like that.
What's that?
We don't need permits for the county.
No, that's right.
Hmm, that's not what I'm told.
Mike McDonald is speechless.
That's right.
We're discussing the options regarding building inspector, but.
We don't have a building inspector, so. It's not a good thing.
I just, I thought you were gonna say something.
Oh no, I'm just going, I mean, he, he kind of already told us what was a wish and what was a, I, I.
Yep.
I'm just gonna speak what I think is, is important. Just mean that it's, I think the motor grater, I think it's a good idea to keep those upgraded. I think your five year plan, that's a great plan. I, I, the return on that is amazing to me. Those motor graders are used every day. I mean, that's, that's, that's a big part of what our residents pay for. That's what they, that's what they expect. They want good roads, you know, it's a no brainer, the tractor. You know, the fencing, I, I could go either way on that. That's probably something we really need to to really start looking at. I mean, that's not going down. It seems like it's going up. Oh, sorry. I'm just over here rambling onto myself. Hi, this is Commissioner Hill here. Um, the dozer you, you said that was kind of a wish. I, I think that's a pretty big expense for a wish. The mini excavator, sounds like you rent that a couple of times a year. That's um, the ten yard dump truck and sander, I guess the question I had on that is is that, is that a real need? Is there some, something they're gonna replace? I mean, I can see it.
It absolutely is a need when we have the snowstorms like we had last year. And that is really the only time they get used. That's why I have such a hard time spending a lot of money on something like this because they get used when we have snow events. Um, I, I am sure, and I think you guys know me well enough by now that I am gonna do my due diligence. If I can find something used for considerably less, I will go that route as long as it's beneficial to the county. So.
I saw you in a really nice Dodge one time and then I saw you in a really, really old truck the next time. So I.
Well, and with the way trucks are going and stuff, Darren and I were kind of talking about maybe even going that route with those, that Dodge fifty five hundred because that thing, it can move a lot of snow. The bad thing is it doesn't hold a lot of sand. It, it doesn't even hold a full bucket on our little tiny loaders. So you run out of sand pretty quickly, but it is a great little rig.
Well, and the nice deal with the ten yard dump truck is when you're done with it, you can use it as a dump truck. I mean, you can haul material. Belly dump and pup, I think that's stuff we really need to keep up on. Those things have a, have an end of life. I mean, they do go, only rebuild them so many times. Uh, the frac tanks, I think that's a great idea for, like you say, some of those wells don't put out a whole lot. So you can, they can be rebuilding while you're watering a road and they're working while you're working. It's a fairly low cost. Um, the pavement pad at, what's PW shop?
Public Works.
Oh, oh, okay. So that's up there.
And that's just for below the, the sand pad, um, just so we can stack the salt, salt sand on that pad. So we're not picking up boulders and trying to shove them in a sander and plugging everything up and putting big rocks out on the road.
I completely understand. Yes, I do. Um, the housing in denial, I know I wasn't on here, but you bought that property basically for the property, but it came with a bonus. Looks like a seventy nine single wide trailer or something. Um, and I think it's great that we haven't rented out to an employee, but I don't know, at what point, I, I understand it's rural, but at what point is the county in the housing business, you know, I I wonder if there's a better option for that than.
Well, you gotta, I mean, if you look at NDOT, they have these, these satellite yards all over the place. They have Orovada, they have Quinn River. Um, that have houses on them and they do the same thing. They rent back to their employees. So they can keep them onsite, on staff.
And that's where I, I guess.
For the response.
I was going, if, if we weren't, if we were to not provide this housing, say it goes dilapidated or, or is deemed unlivable, then we don't have an employee out there, basically.
Right. So our response time would be at least an hour to anything to get out there.
They were doing that. They were driving out to denial. I mean, the, the fuel today and the time that it takes to get out there and get home at night, they start early.
Yeah.
Quit early, you know?
I think we're pretty fortunate to have somebody that's willing to stay out there and be out there. So I, I think that's a, that's a plus.
Is there something that could be remodeled?
I don't know. And I don't know what the um, the electrical is in there, whether it's aluminum or whether it's copper. I know if it's aluminum, you can't, you really can't touch it other than burn the thing down and start over again. It's, it's a double wide trailer that's still on jacks. It doesn't have a foundation. I'd like to look at something a little bit more permanent that's gonna last. You know, if we're gonna put something out there, I want it to, you know, the best bang for the buck. I mean, what are we talking, you know, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars to put a foundation on, under something?
Yeah.
Maybe a little more out there, but.
DA McDonald brought up a good point. You know, nineteen seventy nine, there, there is stipulations on these well, as far as basically out of service date, trying to find a contractor that's even gonna touch it. It's probably gonna be a
Right.
Gonna be a shot in the dark, i- if they're even allowed to, you know.
It's my opinion, like those types of housing, a single wide is sufficient if he's got a family.
Right.
They can come home on the weekends or whatever, come back to town or I, I know what we have in Orovada, it works out just fine.
Right.
And I'm sure they would much rather have a nicer single wide than an old double wide.
I, I would agree. I would agree.
So the, under the, are you done, Jesse?
I'm done now. Yeah, I'm at the end of it. Well, I have vehicles, but.
I didn't want to jump in. Um, under the, the vehicles, uh, existing lease pickups, those are the turn ins that you're talking about. The sixty five hundred is the buyout for those?
That gets us to October when they're turned in. So that, that, that sixty five hundred gets us to the lease end.
Okay.
On that.
I got you.
And so the new ones, the ninety five thousand is for purchasing two.
And those vehicles had a hundred thousand miles on them already?
Each of them, yeah. And that doesn't cover, you know, if we do turn them in because they're actually over a hundred, well, one's right at like ninety nine thousand right now. And I'm not gonna just let it sit for eight months until the lease is up. So it's, it's, we're gonna have some penalties on it if we do.
And so the ninety five thousand for the two pickups is to cover the two that we're gonna dump?
Correct.
Got it.
Oh, yeah.
So, um, uh, I'll just throw mine out. You, you did yours.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah.
Just based on what I see, I, I think the motor grater, the truck tractor is a, is a no brainer. It's gotta happen. Um, the ten yard dump truck, I think with, with the sander in the back of it probably makes a lot of sense. Um, we use it one year. I mean, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna pay for itself. Um, the, you know, I, I thought for a minute I was kicking around the hundred K for the, for the fencing, the security fencing and whatnot, but I think on this year, um, if I had to make a choice between the two, I think I'd probably be interested in, in upgrading that that property in denial as opposed to spending a hundred K on that, on that fence. I think it's better use of the money right now. Um, and then I think the ninety five thousand to replace those two pickups is, is um, is, it's a no brainer. I mean, you're gonna turn two in, you're gonna have to pick two up.
Right.
That's what I had on it. I don't know if that's, I passed up. Some of those, I, I got the, got the vibe that those were more of a wish at this time and I definitely wanted to and I appreciate the fact, you know, you kept those on the list. I mean, those were items that were, you kept seeing how they rotate into the, into the.
I just want to see how receptive you guys are to stuff.
Okay.
We're pretty tight.
Absolutely. And I understand. That's why I, I wanted to give you, okay, these are wishes. So.
Um, and that would take it, what, to two, three fifty? Six, seven, about eight hundred thousand dollars.
Did you get by with the two thousand, under two thousand gallon tanks or do you really need one?
Oh, we can get by. We can get by. That, that, that is a wish. I would love to have it. It would be, we could really use it on the roadside. We could really use it on the utility side. However, we do have a water truck with a new tank on it that we got. It's a big water truck, but this is, this, this one I have on here is a small one and you can get into a lot tighter spaces with it, but.
You're not asking for it, like every grater has a water truck with it?
Every grater typically does have a water tanker.
This one's not for that?
No.
Okay.
No, no. It's for miscellaneous little stuff, little projects that we do that we can't get our tanker trailers into or whatnot.
What about your frac tanks? Is that something that pay for themselves with the amount of extra work you can get done?
I, I think they'll, they'll absolutely pay for themselves. Not in a year, but in a couple of years, the, I mean, it takes ten minutes to fill as opposed to half hour, forty five minutes to fill.
That's the same tank that you've got last year?
Correct, correct. And, and the two we're putting out, we're putting one at Paradise, Paradise Valley, and we're putting the other one at Red House.
The other thing with those frac tanks, could for a minute, is that what the fire control, you know, their thousand gallon tank, aren't they?
Twenty, twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, twenty thousand.
Yep.
So fire protection is a huge thing. Um, rural fire, Paradise Valley, Dermic, you know, all of those.
And we've already, you know, we've been talking to the fire guys and they're like, hey, make sure you put a fire connection on those so they can fill quickly.
And BLM, I guess.
Could we give one of those through our preference for denial?
For what?
Then our preference with denial, did they, did their fire department get one of those tanks? I know we talked about.
No, they were, they were talking about it. They were, because they're gonna have to do something because they've got some cracks in the upper end of it, but they never did get back to us with quotes and numbers.
Okay, well, we're kind of, we're kind of stalling here, guys.
Keep moving, huh?
Keep moving. So, um, any, any other, any other comments, suggestions? I think, um, I, I think I, I pretty much uh shared my, what my view of it. Um, so I, Jesse, you did yours as well. And I, I think Ron has been heading that direction. So I, where are we at? Um, do we have some common ground on the, on this equipment list? The only one is I think we should put some, some money in for fencing if I know where, where he's talking about at the yard up here in Winamucka. I mean, that's, with the price of fuel and whatnot, you're gonna have more and more of that kind of stuff happen and Yeah, the next thing is gonna be drilling old stakes. Not only theft, but damages could, could more encompassing for that.
And we do have, you know, I noticed in the winter, when there was a little bit of snow on the ground, the sheriff's been helping us out tremendously because they do, you know, when they're going up to get fuel or whatever, they make a run through the yard several times a night. So just showing that presence, I think, is a big, big benefit. The other thing too, I've been talking with uh Rick from communications about putting some camera systems or a camera system on the building. We have no cameras up there whatsoever right now. So he's looking at that and getting me a quote to do that. We'll see. He's already run the cables when he was doing that work up there month or two ago. So everything's, everything's ready to go, but it's just a matter of getting the camera system.
So on your hundred thousand dollars on fencing, would that, would that cover that, that section here plus a perimeter fence on Golconda?
I, I believe so. I, I, I think Golconda, we're gonna try and use, um, not chain link, not six foot chain link. We're just gonna use um three strand barb or four strand barb on there just to kind of stay with the aesthetics of what the rest of the area looks like. So we didn't have this giant compound in the middle of Golconda that looks that way. So that's what we're gonna go with right now. And if we go that route, we might be able to get the um NDF to help us out with that. Cause I know they've built fence in the past.
You haven't had any issues in Golconda? You, you don't really leave anything small out there though that well?
No, that's where we lost our water pump. Um, that got stolen from Golconda. We haven't run into too much issue anymore or lately. So the guys have been really good about locking everything up and taking the keys and so.
I would just think that would be somewhere you'd want a little more security than just a barbed wire fence because of the.
Well, the other thing too is the fire department, uh, the chief, Warren Yarnell, he, we're right behind one of their firehouses and he's got a camera pointed right towards our yard. So.
Okay, so what's uh?
What about your place? I got one question about, what about the water pump? Is that a wish or?
It's something in the summer, it's something we use on a daily basis. So could we get by without it? We absolutely could. Uh, we've got some older ones that are still operational in the fleet. So that's something that we could absolutely get by without this year.
That water pump's not replacing the one that was insured?
No.
No. No. That one's already.
Yeah, the twenty is offset by the insurance coverage, right?
The twenty, I just, I just have on there for a, a used one. We found a place back in South Dakota, uh, that has some pretty decent deals on this stuff. And I think the last one we bought was fifteen thousand. And it had, I don't know, right around two thousand hours on it. And basically it's the same as the one that got stolen. So every, every once in a while they have those available and that's why I threw it on there, just so I could, you know, if he had one available, we could jump on it. So.
So what's our, we have some common ground here then?
I think so. Yeah, I think I'm pretty straight on it. I just, we'll just get a number together and.
Oh, I get it. Okay, so I, what, this is what I've heard, and you guys chime in here as I go on.
Yep.
I think we're all in consensus that the grader and the truck tractor needs to happen. Um, the water, used water pump is likely something we'd get, probably will get a lot of value for the county out of. Uh, possibility of a ten-yard dump truck and plow sander. Um, and uh, the two pickups that, uh, to replace the, the ones that are gonna be turned in, lease turn-ins. Correct?
Yeah, what happened to the?
Belly dumps.
Belly dumps, the frac tanks, the pavement and the trailer.
Okay, so, so we're, I'm missing the belly dump?
Yeah, and the pup.
The, the, the belly, the, the first belly dump?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, both of them.
And the pup trailer.
Yeah.
It's together.
Yep.
Two additional frac tanks.
Okay, Zach?
Maybe it'd be easier to say what you wanna take out?
Yeah. Maybe so.
We can agree on that.
What about the D eight?
The what?
The D eight.
The cat or the dozer?
How often you use them?
It depends. Lately, we've been using it quite a bit. Um, I would say in the last month, we've probably used it two solid weeks total. Um, in the previous six months, it had probably gotten two solid weeks total of use. It's just one of those things that when we need it, we need it. Kinda like a snowcat.
There, yeah, you've got it. It's got a thousand.
Right.
They can get them from the state for a whole lot less.
Absolutely. And, and I will always, and, and I know the state stuff is maintained very well. I, I'd really like to get their high track, D six that they have. Um, they just sunk a bunch of money into that, so I don't think they're gonna wanna get rid of that. So.
I'm sure you keep an eye on them.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
If you can get some at a, at a price from them.
Yep.
Does it make sense to, um, we don't use it to, to hire, um, honeywell or something to get when we need it?
It's possible. However, when the guys, I, I guess we'd have to figure out how we're gonna do that, because like when the guys are doing it, they're, they're out there, they're pushing for four hours, then they're hauling. And then they're pushing for four hours and they're hauling. So some of these pits that we're doing, it, it would be really hard to have honeywell go out there and push for a week straight. And still have room to move around. But it could absolutely.
I guess, I guess my comment though would be is, uh, if, if we put that on the list for next year, would that be a, you know, how, how would that affect your work program?
The only thing that I could see that where it would, where it would affect is if NDOT said, yeah, hey, we're getting rid of this and I don't have it in my budget. And I can't jump on it. Then I would have to basically, you know, whatever you give me, and if I haven't spent the money, I would have to say, we're gonna push that till next year and we're gonna use that money for this. So.
That's always a possibility, yeah?
Yep. Absolutely. It's always a possibility.
Okay.
Wouldn't the easy way to just be take everything we've took out, reduce that but and give him that, give him that number?
Take out the?
Instead of the one point three nine, one five hundred, we just take everything we took out, we just minus all that and we've reduced his budget by blah, blah, blah.
You don't wanna go by, by?
I mean, we can, but it seems like we're, we're, we don't know what we're taking out and what we're leaving in and what we're.
Yeah, I'm a little bit confused by that too. So I was gonna ask for that clarification, what we're cutting.
Yeah, just take it out.
Okay. So what's, Jesse, why don't you tell me what, what, what you would take out then?
Okay. So what I have is that we're going to take out, coming down the line, the first thing that we're gonna take out is the dozer for a hundred thousand. The mini excavator's coming out for forty-five thousand. Uh, the two thousand gallon water trucks coming out for thirty thousand. Um, the ten yard, oh, okay, that's take out. So that, and then those two lease trucks are going away after the sixty-five hundred is paid to get us through ten twenty-two, ten of twenty-two.
Sorry, is that what, three items there?
One, yeah, one, two, three. I took four items out.
What was the fourth item?
The ten yard?
Sixty-five hundred can't come out, that?
Yeah, the sixty-five hundred can come out.
Right, that stays until that, but that goes away and then we, we stay with the two trucks.
No, we still have to have, we still have to have the sixty-five hundred to get us to the end of the lease. And then once that lease is in, well, probably in July, if this gets approved, I'm gonna put out quote, get, get quotes and try and get trucks ordered if I can.
So I guess there's only, there's only three things, three big things that, that I, that I had on my list.
What about the storage building for Golconda? That's a hundred and ten.
We never, we kinda talked about putting two Conexes together, but that was about as far as we got. I, I honestly think that's a.
It, it's something that I can, it's something that I can absolutely look at to see what it would take to make the Conex that we have out there climate controlled. So, and that, and that's something we can probably pull out of special projects if, you know, if it's cheap enough, which I would imagine it would be. So.
So you're thinking to pull in the, the hundred ten out for the, for the storage vehicle or storage?
I, I think so for right now, but it's, you know, that's one of those things I would just like you guys to be aware of that.
I'd like to get it out too. There's my fourth one.
Okay, so we're at, I'm gonna go back to circle.
Okay, water or, sorry.
Okay, so we're taking, we're taking a storage building out, the dozer, the mini compactor, the two thousand gallon water truck.
Yep.
Everything else stays in?
Yeah, everything else. I kinda sensed that there was.
What about the house?
Yeah.
The house, the house, we talked about a little bit and it was up and down, so I guess we need to hash out the house. We're gonna, that's also a hundred.
Go either way on it, but I, you know, I, you made a, a great argument, Ron. I mean, um, you know, if we're running the vehicles out there, we're getting three hours a day out of the crew because they're back and forth the whole time. It pays for itself pretty doggone fast. And, and the other thing is if we've got somebody who is willing to live on that site right now, if we can provide him a halfway decent spot, I, I think it's an opportunity.
The other thing too is, you know, having him live there on that yard, cause
Yeah.
that's where all of our equipment is and everything. So it's just.
Eliminates a hundred thousand dollars in fencing.
Yeah, well. But it's kinda like Orovata. You got Kurt living right there with all the equipment and everything and.
But is it something that needs to be done this year?
I. I'd like to see it, but I could absolutely see, I mean, I can do a little bit more crunch and I can do some checking to see what the possibilities are of get, I mean, I don't even know if we can get homes anymore, you know, or if we can get it within the year. So I'm not sure. You know, we might be able to order it now and have it next October.
Leave it in there for now and let, and let Don do some more checking on it and we can address it before final budget.
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable.
So that takes two hundred and eighty-five thousand out. Right?
Yes.
I'm comfortable with that.
At all?
You, you have a second thought, sir, Jesse?
What else?
Okay.
We're gonna do the pad?
He thought that might be a project that they could put together.
It, it's something that I could probably pull out of my special projects fund. So if you wanted, you know, if you guys are okay with it, um, we don't have to keep it here. I can pull it out of the line item that we have in our budget.
Kinda what I was thinking, so.
So.
Let's pull it.
Yeah.
Pull it?
Yeah.
What, I didn't hear that. Which one?
The pavement pad.
Pull the pad?
Yeah.
Three twenty-five out there.
Was three twenty-five?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so whoever, whoever's motion this is needs to identify the projects that stay, or the, the equipment that stays in the, in the budget or projects.
Okay.
Specifically.
I make.
You're the mayor.
I'm the mayor.
I'd make a motion, uh, I'd make a motion for the road fund tentative approval to, for a motor grader, uh, truck and tractor. Do I need to put the amounts in? Um, fencing a Golconda yard and Winemuck a shop. Used water pump. Ten-yard dump truck with plow sander. Belly dump trailer with a pup. And two frac tanks. And newer housing for denial property. Uh, the lease on the two pickups, uh, through October second of this year and two new pickups.
Is that what you had, Don?
Yep.
Okay. That's what I had. Uh, I'm sorry. Okay, is that what everybody's thinking? Okay. So, and that was in the form of a, of a.
Tentative motion.
Tentative motion. Um, I would also state for that motion that, uh, we can pull the amounts off of this spreadsheet. Um, you know, for each of those items that were provided on the spreadsheet.
I'll add that to the motion.
Okay. So to, uh, because we didn't list the amounts for each of those items, they, he can pull the amounts that were listed in the spreadsheet. Okay? Any additional comments, discussion?
What was the total? Did you, did you come up with totals, Gina?
The total for that, uh, fund now will be four million, seven hundred fourteen thousand, four eighty. And the total amount for the capital projects request of that is one million, sixty-six thousand, five hundred.
Okay. Right. Uh, any further discussion on it? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Unanimous. Okay, uh, Regional Transportation Fund two oh four.
So again, Don Calcoski, Homehold County Public Works, I have an increase on the dust control of about twelve and a half percent, twenty-five thousand dollars just to cover us with increasing costs that's being passed along on our annual program. And that's, that's really the only thing. Uh, we've got road maintenance on there, which covers, that's flat, which covers, uh, additional materials that we're putting on roads, gravel and base on the roads. And we've been pretty good at that so far this year. Um, and then I've got one point two million for the county street projects.
Okay. Any just, any, uh, questions on that?
I guess, uh, we've got the budget at one point six, six hundred and seventy-five thousand. Now that fund, that diesel tax isn't bringing quite, doesn't bring in that much just for our half, right?
Uh, diesel tax has been right at about a million is what it's projected. So half of that is what we get.
I don't know what my question was.
We're gonna take three minutes after this item. So, um, any other questions? Okay, we're looking at one point five two percent increase having to do with that dust control. So, uh, any motions?
Motion to approve the Regional Transportation Fund two zero four tentatively as presented.
Motion on the floor, any discussion on the motion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. We're gonna take three minutes if you guys. I'm gonna take the opportunity, I guess. Three minutes. It's five thirty-one right now, so.
Can we put an escalator in over here?
What's that?
Put an escalator in over here.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get right on that.
We're gonna be on item under item 30, Public Works Department. We're gonna be in the city 204-052.
Oh, back on RTC. The city did I get got Alicia's request at 950,000, so.
Okay.
That's her amount.
So. Do we have? I guess we have taken action on that.
We don't even have to do anything since that's the city's piece. Out of the RTC fund, we track what belongs to the city and what belongs to the county. And
Okay.
Yeah, they've already adopted that on there.
Got it.
It's more of a
So we go to the county side of it, which is 204053 here, you did.
And we just did that, so.
We're to Paradise.
Now we're on to Paradise.
Paradise Sewer.
Yes.
Got it.
Don Kalkowski, Humboldt County Public Works. Figure out where what I was doing. So increases in the wages to account for to operators and and everybody else for the administration and the COLA and and all that. The other increase I have is services and supplies. We're currently at 9,000. It's been averaging right around 10,000 for the last three years. So I brought that up to 10,000 to cover. Depreciation. It was about 16,000 last year. I brought it up to cover that on that. And I don't I don't know how to explain that item.
Yeah, so depreciation, this is an enterprise fund, so you want to be able you want to book the depreciation on an enterprise fund. And then that tells us totally accumulated, sets that money aside. So in the event that we do have to make a major replacement, we know what that cost is.
On your services and supplies, our sheet show that you've already spent 10,000, 10,042.
As of January 31st, I was at 9,000. Sorry.
So is 10,000 maybe not enough?
Possibly. Possibly.
Well, that isn't enough because you're already over.
Right. The most important piece that we look at is you'll see where it says Class 52 Services and Supplies total and the budget 16.3 and he spent 11,042. We're gonna by the time we book depreciation, that will go over. So we will probably have to come back with an augmentation. The problem is this fund is quickly running out of money.
Well, that was my next question.
So.
If I see this coming up, are we gonna have to go back and look at rates again?
So we we are. Right now, I'm working with Nevada Rural on McDermott Sewer. Looking at the rates on there. I'm still gathering all the information that they require to do a rate study on that on that system. He actually called me today and wanted to set up a meeting. So I'll I'll set something up with him shortly to go through this. Once we get McDermott Sewer squared away, I'm gonna tackle Paradise Sewer.
Okay.
Same deal, so.
Okay. Yeah, if we're over now, prospect, there's no way in the world we're gonna
And I don't know when the last time the rates were looked at out there. Barely brings in less than $13,000 a year in revenue. There's only $15,000 in this fund right now. So it's
Yeah.
We have something major happen and not even major, major, something even 10, $15,000 and we'd be in trouble.
Yep. Agreed. Anything else? We have
Make a motion?
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to tentatively approve the Paradise Valley Sewer budget as presented.
Motion on the floor. Additional discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Star City Water 503.
So this is one I've actually got a reduction on wages and salaries. And that was just going through and looking at how much time we're spending and just the admin portion that we're spending towards that. So we we've adjusted that. So that's why we're having a savings there. We're still kind of getting a grasp on this whole unit because haven't really didn't really have much to go with it in the the first year, which was last year. So we're still still getting that worked out. I do have a pretty significant increase on services and supplies. That is a lot of it has to do with the chemical price increases for the chlorine. That stuff's going up substantially. So that's where, in fact, I think that's the only thing that I have increasing, which gives us roughly a seven and a half percent increase overall.
Okay.
Is this a, I mean, you mentioned Paradise Valley Sewer and McDermott Sewer, looking at the rates. Shouldn't we do it on all these enterprises?
So we've done we did Golconda when we had it. We did McDermott Water when we had it. So those have all already been done. And I believe this was the last year to get them because it was a staged increase on those two. And I think this brought it up to the full the full increase that was planned. So they're topped out off that wage study or the the rate study this year. Star City is something we can absolutely look at. I just haven't.
So like McDermott Water, was that done after we did all the improvements to the got the arsenic?
No. No, this was done 2018, 2019, I believe. And then it was like a three-year phase in. So this year was the last.
So that those rates could be different now with that new plant?
Could absolutely, especially with the price of everything there. You know, especially for McDermott, our feric has almost tripled in price for that arsenic treatment plant.
Sorry, at this stage of the game, we probably ought to be thinking about, you know, reviewing those rates, I think, on all of them. We certainly want to get in a position where we're subsidizing those those enterprise funds with taxes on it.
Right.
That's what they said in audit, too. Verbally told us that in audit, we need to look at all of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, real good idea.
Yep. Right now, though, are we comfortable with with this budget the way it stands? Okay, any other questions for Don? Motion?
Motion to tentatively approve the Star City Water budget as presented.
Motion on the floor, any additional discussion on the motion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? This motion carries. We're gonna move on to the McDermott Water, which is 760.
So this one did some figuring on the on the wages portion and just the time we're spending and everything. And we actually have a little bit of a savings in there with that. Service supplies, I did increase 150%. And that's the chemical costs again. I've got repairs and maintenance down a little bit. I pulled a little bit off of there just because I think we're we're doing all right. We have we're doing all right right now. So just trying to trying to make it a little bit more balanced, I guess. And that was, you know, the the 150% increase in the service supplies was the the big portion. And I think I have a 1.5% increase overall.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Comments on this? Okay, how about a motion?
Motion to tentatively approve the McDermott Water budget.
Motion on the floor. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. McDermott Sewer 761.
So this one is actually down by 0.83%. And that was just reallocation of how the how the wages are figured with the administration and everything, so. Everything else left pretty much the same.
Mr. Chair. Don, do you see the the completion of that sewer line being new sewer line you're putting in under the highway being done this budget cycle?
I I sure hope so. I got another I got an email from Endot Today requesting evidently there's a storm sewer that runs right across where we're putting where we're boring under underneath the road. So they wanted to see that on the details. So I gotta go up there and get some elevations on that for the engineers. I was completely unaware that that was even there. So good thing they brought it to our attention. So we're getting that. I've already got the permit into Endot, obviously. I've got Harney, they're supposed to be sending me the agreement to get the power pole planted for that. And I've gotten the 90% plans. I've made comments, sent that back. She gave me comments on my comments today and we kind of went back and forth and just kind of hashed that all out. And so I think I think we're doing pretty good. I had to do a a letter to Bureau of Safe Drinking Water today requesting a variance on the size of the the sewer line that we're putting in. The standards are eight inch. We only have a few eight inch in the system right now. The majority of it's six inch until you get closer to the Palm, then it's eight inch. So we're requesting a variance on that. And so with that, Far West is getting ready to send that design to NDP for approval. So we're getting there. I'm hoping we're gonna be able to get that done. We've already secured the piping. Western Nevada has it for us. The big probably the big ticket item that may take some lead time is the the sewer vault itself. So.
You've got three months.
I'm hoping. I'm hoping.
Okay. Any additional comments? Okay, motion?
I will make a motion. I would make a motion that we have tentatively approved the McDermott Sewer or budget, sorry.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Kind of shoving you over.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, so move to item 31. Thanks, Don.
You bet. Thank you.
Item 31, Library 207.
Hey, good evening. Jessica Anderson for the Humboldt County Library. So Fund 207. We've got no increases. I do still have a telephone line item, but that is because my two branch libraries deny on McDermott. They don't have the VoIP phone yet, so they still go off of Humboldt Telephone Company. And then I do have one decrease from what's on here. Line item 52155, our automation project. That is our Nevada Library Cooperative, which is our integrated library system and all of our digital content. We approved a cost share from the Co-op Supplement Fund. So that's decreased from 30,000 to 21,000. And then any other questions?
Any questions, comments, concerns? Motion?
I'll make a motion. I would make a motion that we tentatively approve the 207 Library Fund budget.
Okay, motion on the floor.
Yes.
With the decrease.
With the decrease. On the automation project from 30,000 to 21,000.
Okay. We have any additional comment on that? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
Thank you.
Library Memorial Fund?
Oh, yes, and Library Memorial Fund. So I did just drop it a little bit. But and I moved a few things around. But it's it basically covers our summer learning program. Any prizes that we give out comes from Memorial Fund, so we're not spending taxpayer money on like prizes, that's donations. And our Memorial Fund scholarship comes out of this as well.
We have any questions for Jessica on that? Okay. How about a motion?
Motion to approve the Library Memorial Fund number 740 tentatively.
Motion on the floor. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, we're out of money. We're done.
We're done.
Yeah, we're broke. We're done. We're all closed up. Let's let's start this again tomorrow, huh?
What's that?
She and I want to go home.
I just told him that they're all worn down now. It should be good.
I'm just getting a getting a second wind here.
Right?
He was just kidding you.
Yeah, I think the kit Mars on his way, but we could start.
Okay, Ag District 3, 12070.
All righty. Good evening, Kim Peterson, Ag District 3. The good news in my budget, I have a single snowcat in there. So we're in good shape.
Everybody's everybody's a comedian.
Yeah.
Got a courthouse in there?
Not that either. Just one thing right off the bat, just general revenue information. Just wanted to give you a quick date on where we are and where we anticipate being in in room tax as we finalize the year. At this point, it looks like we're we had budgeted 300,000. We were cautious because we didn't know what COVID would be. We're at 316,500. But we'll be adding another looks like we'll be adding another 35,000 by the end of this month. And if things stay on track, the way we're tracking room tax, tracking higher than it's banned, we should this we should be taking in close to $490,000 this this year that we're currently in. And we don't see depending again on gas prices, but we anticipate that people that are continuing to drive. And we don't see, depending again on gas prices, but we anticipate that people are going to continue to drive instead of going on, on flights or things like that. We'll go that way. So room tax is looking good. We did budget a little bit higher. We, 300,000 last year we did in our budget, put in 390. So we just bumped it up $90,000. As for the expenses, you'll see that our overall budget, we are up 18% for the fairground. And that is mostly, biggest majority of those costs come in the way of labor costs. As you call, we added two more positions while we haven't built them yet because we're having a tough time like everybody else finding qualified people that we want to hire on for long term. And that's what we're open to get out there as someone that's, I've got people getting close to retiring out there. So we're having a tough time. So we haven't spent any of that money in this year's budget for the labor. And I don't know, hopefully by summer, we've got at least one filled. So I don't know where the total ends going to be on that. But our labor cost, that would put us up about 34%, I believe, running that number in the cost of labor. But that is our biggest increase in the salaries department. And then under services supplies, we're just trying to catch up. We got behind the eight ball over the last few years on utilities and trash removal and that kind of thing. So as you look through here, you'll see we've made some pretty decent increases. Let's keep calling them. Increases in the cost of trash pickup, electricity, natural gas. So as the dust settles, we, again, we are over overall about 18%. We are down in our capital projects for 070, down about 33,000 from last year in the budget. Our list of capital projects we've included equal about 403,000. I have put these in order of least our priority. I know a lot of this will depend as we come back to you later on, as if we're having budget issues or funds aren't there, then obviously we won't ask for the funds. But we have, on our projects, we have the Buddy Vacuum Trailer, as you know, WCBA purchased one. It should be here anytime. And we want to test that out before we jump in and get another one. If it works well, we think that it will be a real cost saving for us, especially when we have a tough time getting labor. Hopefully we'll be able to do more of that with our full-time labor. We've got another 38,000 in event center parking lot lighting upgrade retrofit. We're going to use existing poles that are out there. We're going to hang lights on the backside of those so we get more coverage. We're going to LEDs so that we have power on those poles. So we won't have to wire any more power and utilize that to their best advantages. As you know, the years we've grown and grown and lighting is getting tougher. Got too many black safety issues, dark areas that we need to light up. We are also looking at when we built the pavilion, we moved some dirt and when we did the campground C and D, we stockpiled a bunch of dirt up in the far east portion of the property. And we have a warm-up arena on the end of the pavilion that's in a hole. And we've taken some of the stalls out of there and now we're going to hire Honeywell or whomever, Honeywell most likely, to relocate that stockpile of dirt down and level that whole area off. So you'll come right out of the pavilion, right across to the other arenas that are stalls that are used to that. So right now, it rains a lot, we've got a lake and it's hard to have in the winter type area, horrible green when it's full of water. So that project. And then hopefully, as Commissioner Cherry has shared with you, we've got competition out there in the surrounding communities out in Fallon. So we're trying to keep up with that. And we continue to put covers over our, some of our retrofit, our distance stalls, so they've got metal covered. We're going to do an area, we like to do an area east of the indoor event center. Currently, we're having to put tarps over it, big project to put them up before, you know, in the beginning of summer and then take them down, keep them tied down, they tear and they're just kind of a hazard. So we continually want to move forward with, this will give us about another 100 covered stalls. We're getting closer, getting that done. And then if there's funds, we'd like to expand the eastern paved parking from the indoor event center. Parking only goes out so far and then we have dirt. As you can see by the last ranch and rodeo, we ran out of parking. We can't stripe the dirt, so we'd like to move continually move out. We've got an area that we'd like to put another section of paving for about $98,000 in striping. Just an update, we are, we have got, you know, we've got the bids back. So as soon as the weather, I'm getting calls from the paving slurry, or the slurry seal company, trying to get ready to start crack filling and trying to get that project done. And then hopefully we can add this on there as well. And then we have our normal miscellaneous livestock panels and gates that we continually have to upgrade and replace and get there throughout the year. That's pretty much our budget there. Our revenues for that, I don't know if you have revenues in this factory. We are, we are projecting about $90,000 in more revenue for the 070. We've been, we've been tracking that way, but I've been very cautious with, with the COVID. I didn't know how that would all wash out. So we were kind of conservative on that. But we think comfortably we can raise that anticipated revenue up another $90,000. So that's kind of where we are with 070. If you have any questions.
Any questions, Commissioners?
Do you see WCBA helping out with any of these projects?
With these, I'm not sure yet. You know, they just did the Buddy Trailer. That was about 45,000. They're also involved in covering their, we just got the supplies to cover 58 more stalls. There are about 80,000 that they just put in. So I could, we'll see when we get closer, I may be able to go and get them to share some of the costs of that stall addition upgrade cover and see if they might participate in that as well. So it's not out of the question, but it's in the budget here.
Then there's been, we've had the discussion at WCBA about expanding or adding to the event center out there with kitchen showers, that sort of stuff. Did you choose, you chose not to put that in this year's budget?
Well, I, I will prob, that will be a project that I think I will try to go to WCBA first. It's going to be a couple million dollars. I'll see if they'll, they'll pay for that. We don't have enough really to make a sizable contribution to that. So I'm hoping that for the long haul, they had to add that on. I think they have some funds they might go put to that.
Okay. Any additional comments on this?
I was wondering on the additional paving on the eastern parking lot, would that be something that the event center fund would be able to pay for?
Well, this comes out of, this is out of the fund.
It's all the same.
Yeah, all this comes out of the fund.
Yes, there's, there's two departments within the same fund, so they're all under Fund 212.
And this year, all the capital projects are on 070. We don't have any on 073, which decreased that by about 215,000, I believe.
Okay. Any additional comments?
Under your number six miscellaneous gates and panels, you don't have a cost to that. Is that by design?
Do I not have 10,000?
Not on this page you didn't, but he does on the other page, so it's 10,000.
Sorry, yeah. We usually put in about 10,000, sometimes we use it, sometimes we don't. Depends on how nasty those bulls are.
Horses. Are those bear riders?
Horses are, the horses are hard on everything. Any additional comments, questions?
I guess the only other question I have is by expanding that parking lot, I've noticed you've set up a lot of those temporary pins there during some events. Is that going to affect that?
Those temporary pins are the ones that I'll probably cover. And I have to tear all those down and move them, we'll move them back.
They'll be beyond the.
Yeah, it'll be, you know, they'll be, because I have to use different parts of those. I'll use some of those parts, but the sidewalls, they hold the roof. And so I can't use them all, but we'll push them back up past that area. And there's still plenty of room between that and RV park up there to park for. And that's a good place where we bring them in by A1. That's a good place for the day, people for coming for the day to use it and to park out there, so. And then we're still working on the, this thing moves so slow with the engineers. Still working on the restroom showers that'll be up there on the east end, a new set of showers. So it'll kind of accommodate all this parking and stalls and everything up in that area.
You kind of mentioned having trouble filling a couple of those positions. Have you got an attendant, do you have an attendant out there now that's just kind of a stall attendant and?
We, I have, we have a gal that we, we have out there that just kind of keeps track, kind of the weekend.
Yeah.
Evening stall gal, she lives in the house. We have a rental agreement with her. She pays rent for that, but she puts in so many hours to kind of oversee.
Yeah. And then you got Ramon and them still out there.
Yeah, we have Ramon still there and Juan and Carlos. We're still trying to find.
Another.
Another. One more before the summer here. I've got some that we've just, we just reopened it back up again and Abel's been working with me and I think we have some to look through and see what we got.
That's good.
I wish, if we could, all my guys are, all those guys out there are great. I would, are hard workers.
Okay.
Are we going to have any problems? We've got some questions here on capital outlay.
Okay.
And you said not all, you know, but the expenditures take place before 630, 22. What do you mean by that?
But we're just, we're going to have to see, we're getting down to the wire and I've got some projects out there that I'm having a heck of a time. My biggest thing is they've got to be engineered and these engineers are taking, I've got one and the engineer's been working on it for, the Breeze Way, been working on it for a year, trying to get it all back. I just had it planned check and there were some things that we have to consider, so I've had to send it back to the engineers. So, yeah, it depends.
Okay, the only, the only reason I ask.
I'll ask you if you speak in that mic.
Sure. Maybe you don't want to hear what I'm saying. Gina, is there any problems with, with that 630, 22? How does he handle that?
The, I'm sorry, I guess I don't.
Okay.
If he, if he isn't able to.
Capital outlay.
Right, if he isn't able to complete those projects, is that your question?
Will the expenditures take place in 630, 22?
Well, that's what he's saying, if they, there's a possibility they may not. So what we'll have to do is come back before you for the next fiscal year's augmentations.
Okay, so they won't get done?
Correct. We would, if it started, it'll be considered a construction in progress.
Okay.
CID on the fixed assets. So we'll be able to capture the portion that was and then upon completion.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the audits and different stuff on. Then it would come out of next year's budget.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Any additional? How about a motion?
All right, I'll make a motion, this Commissioner Hill. I would make a motion that we tentatively approve the Ag District 3 budget as presented today.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Indoor Events Center 212073.
All right. Again, we have a slight increase on revenue in that department. Kim Peterson again. Again, we're very conservative on the revenue, just trying to make sure that we're well within our, our budget. Then on expenses, again, majority of my expenses are in labor. What Gina does is we, and together we allocate our total manpower, we allocate it out to, part of it goes for the indoor event center and part of it goes for the fairgrounds. So again, it raises up the increase a little bit in all the areas. I did, again, the same thing. I had to bump up the trash. We got way behind the eight ball on trash costs and some utility costs, janitorial maintenance because as the buildings are being used more than, obviously our expenses are higher. And, and just the cost, you can't believe, just the cost of garbage bag. I've just, as a matter of fact, if you can get them. I mean, we came into big events, we couldn't even get Tricen can liners and. We've had, we're having to take out our paper towel dispensers and change them because we can't get that brand anymore of paper towel. I mean, fortunately, they give us the dispensers, the new company to use their towel. But it's just things like out there that you're up against and the costs and just trying to keep the facility going. But. And again, we're, we're down. Obviously, in this one, last year, we had a budget of 235,000 in capital. And this year, we're for that facility at zero. We have no capital projects, they're all on the fairground side for this next year. So that's basically what we have.
Any questions? Anybody?
I'll make a motion.
Yep.
To tentatively approve the Ag District 3 073 budget as presented.
We have a motion on the floor. Any additional comments on the motion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you. I will give you one update after Commissioner Cherry's been promoting the Fallon facility and how nice their grandstands are with no posts in front of it. I, WCBA went out and hired an engineer company, company, a few engineers in the company and we, they ran every number they could think of to eliminate the two posts in the middle and they just can't, they just can't figure it out how to, without putting in a beam that's 12 foot. And then it blocks all the view across the whole distance. But, so they gave me a whole set of calculations and everything. And they told me to go to a steel company, a company that makes big steel buildings and they may have some tricks up their sleeve that they use. And then give them my numbers that they came up with and see if we're, so we're, we're not done yet. We're going to, we're going to keep, keep trying, but unfortunately it's hard to, hard to do. But in the meantime, we're, we're putting cameras in the facility and we're hoping to put up TVs in, in front of the bleachers and hopefully we can eliminate some more of those dead areas.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you. Appreciate all you guys' hard work.
Okay, item 33 is review and possible revisions of the workshop actions and need to reconvene, and a need to reconvene on Tuesday.
I move that we don't.
We, we do need to go back to tab 30 for the payments in lieu of taxes, the PIL fund. Oh. You didn't need it.
Tab 30, Gina?
Yes, tab 30. So prior to the cuts in the road fund, the, you would have needed 1.2. We cut 325. So we'll need 875,000 in the road fund. We anticipate receiving 1.9 million again, probably a little bit over that. Last year, we got 1.910, so not a lot over that. We could leave it alone for now or we could transfer that other million to either the capital projects fund or the building reserve fund. capital projects fund or the building reserve fund, wherever you determine where you want the courthouse remodel or court, the courtroom renovation.
We need to make that decision?
We don't need to make it today, we can at least put the 875,000 in there to the road fund, and then before.
That's not much in there.
Pull the report real quick. So right now, the Pilt Fund has 294,730, and then we'll anticipate receiving again 1.9 million, so that'll leave roughly 1.4, 1.5 million in the fund.
So there's, there's not enough in there to move the 875 right now?
No, we don't usually make those transfers until actual, after we actually receive the Pilt money for, so if for some reason we don't get what we anticipated, then we can come back and, and discuss that change.
I kind of like to just think about that a lot before we dedicate that money into either one of those accounts, make sure we're going to be squared away. We can always transfer out of Pilt.
Yes, that's correct.
We, we still have a couple more things that I think are outstanding in my, in my view, and that is, you know, we don't have either one of the units for the employment, the negotiations for our.
Right.
Employment contracts are, we're still outstanding on those, and there could be a significant change there.
Correct.
So I'd kind of like to sit on that until we figure out what that is, so.
County mine.
You think?
Yeah, oh yeah, that's, that's absolutely fine, I just wanted to not leave today until we had that, that discussion to kind of talk about that. Okay.
Well, and the other thing is, I don't know if we've really agreed on where, or if we're going to create another fund either.
Nope. I, I, my understanding was on that run was that where that was going to be a part of the, that meeting having to do with the, the bigger question of what we're going to do with the courts, with, with the court renovation. Whenever we were going to talk about how we were going to fund that, we're going to have a matrix in terms of our funding options and whatnot, but we're also going to talk about a larger picture, how we're going to squirrel that money away.
So you, you're referring to whether or not we want to fix this one, or, or do something?
Yeah, we've got more engineering coming on a standalone versus this, in terms of the costs and whatnot, and then Dave was going to come up with a, a funding matrix.
And the other note I made for myself is that once you have determined where you want that paid out of, I'll come back before you with a request to transfer funds out of the general fund for the difference of the additional revenues over expenditures that we had for the prior fiscal year, so we can start directing that money towards that project.
Yeah.
One other thing that I just wanted to mention real quick is that we did receive the health insurance increase from Hometown Health, and they are currently reporting a 31% increase. So we're pushing back against that, they haven't been able to give us our data since December. So here we are trying to go out to self-funding, and we don't even have current statistics to provide them. So we're having trouble even getting people to quote because they want current information. So we have, with the assistance of our brokers with A&amp;H Insurance, written a letter to Hometown Health because this is actually against the law with the, and the Department of Insurance didn't even know that they hadn't been providing this. The school district's been given a 40% increase, and so we, Hometown Health has really kind of let us down over the last couple of months, and we are definitely concerned. So the budgeted amount includes what the current insurance rate is, so just wanted to make you aware that did not reflect any change, and as this ball comes rolling at us, we may be back before you with further information there as well. Just a heads up.
You have that good news?
Yeah, I thought I, thought I'd save that to the end of the day, it's not nine o'clock, it's not nine o'clock, and we don't have to come back tomorrow.
Yeah, that is good news.
Whoa, yes.
Okay, we'll move, I, I don't think we have anything left on 33 to deal with, do we? 34 is public comment, do we have any additional public comment online? Not hearing any additional public comment, this meeting's adjourned.